State Banking Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Banking Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawnmower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if you can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Geun and Fayette. We've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for 23 some-odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello. Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Geun to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bsc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Heavenly Father, we love you in praise and we thank you for this day and for all the new and wonderful blessings in your life. Father, I just pray that you will sit with me in this sermon with wisdom, help us to be mindful of your will. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for many blessings that you give into this community. All these things I ask for, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome our vote to the November 7, 2023 Winfield City Council meeting. The first item on the agenda is approved minutes from October 17, 2023. Any questions? How is this written? I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
James and Keith Segal, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is the Housing Board appointment. Martha Humber. It's come to the recommendation to come to the Housing Board for her continuing to serve. She's taken a... she'll be reappointed. She's been on the board quite some time. They're letting her up. The board here is asking for us to reappoint her back to that board. Housing Board, that's my recommendation to them. James and Keith, all in favor. The next item on the agenda is a resolution number 1363. It's an ALDOT signal agreement that ALDOT reached out to me about being part of. It's a...
We've talked... she says we've not done it before, but they've changed a little bit.
I remember talking with them about it a couple of years back. They've got a program to work. If we have a light problem, if they go to a quick flash, if they go to... whether they're not working or whatever, we have to call somebody like Showers Electric or one of the other companies to come out to reset it or whatever. ALDOT can provide that service, but the way they do it is we put money in a kind of an account for them to build out of it. I kind of... I think $1,500 is what they're asking us to... Put in that account for service. If it goes over, then of course they'll reach out to us for finished payment or any bill either. Angie, she got a copy. Sent two hours from ALDOT. If you need to see it, if you want to wait in tables and talk to some of the... Caitlin, with ALDOT debt down there. It's kind of a... it's a court of response and having to wait on show. Like if we have a light to go out, I think ALDOT's here in Hamilton and in Fayette instead of us having to try to wait and get some...
Better than two years.
Sorry?
A little better than two years.
Yeah. ALDOT, we can put that on ALDOT. We don't need to go there. But y'all, you want me to get you a paperwork to look over?
Yeah, let's take it.
Next item on the agenda is school board funding for the park board agreement. It's resolution number 1364 and orders number 983. Is all the council aware of that, what that's going to consist of in this ordinance and this resolution? You know, this ordinance is the resolution.
No, the ordinance is just an ordinance and it's not a resolution. There's an ordinance and there's an exhibit to it. The ordinance deals with the pledge, the continued pledge of the four cents, the split on the four cent tax money to allow the school to move forward with their proposed project. There is an amendatory agreement that's attached as an exhibit A that deals with the school granting some money back to the city to help fund the building of the gymnasium and park property that we had discussed. And that's been resolved and worked out, and there's an agreement in there that is part of the ordinance that the school would agree to help fund the building of a park gymnasium. Currently up to at one for, based on one half of the cost of the gymnasium, up to $1.5 million for a gymnasium that the city owns and deals on city property that the school would then be allowed to use when the park's not using it. It's helping us fund the building of that gymnasium that we've been trying to get built for the park.
For years.
For years.
Mayor, I'd like to give a quick overview of exactly what we're doing here. I'm Bob Young with Craven, we've worked with y'all, the bond issues and that's good to be back up here. As Todd was alluding to, he and Kate Burnett, who's the other dark soon in the room with Bradley Arant, have been working on this ordinance and the agreement. And what this ordinance and agreement will do is to extend the taxes that you already sent to the school board each year for as long as the bonds are outstanding. Under Alabama law, the only taxes that can be used to pay for a loan are local taxes. So you can't use a special education trust fund. You can't use federal funds. And so local funds are the only ones that a school board can use to pay debt service. So what this does is it extends the tax to the point until the debt is paid off. And this is very usual for both city school boards as well as county school boards on financings around the state where the agreement is adopted by the entity that levies the tax to continue sending the tax money so that the debt can be paid. And that's all it does. This is an ordinance, and it will require a vote for immediate consideration and then that has to be announced and then a vote on the ordinance itself.
And Bob, this is not actually a bond issue. This is simply to continue the tax pledge.
That's correct. Yeah, the city is not obligated in any way, shape, form, or fashion as far as the debt is concerned. It's only the continuation of the appropriation of funds.
And the bond issue will actually be issued by the board?
The school. Yes, the city will not be in any way obligated whatsoever on that. It will be totally dependent on the school board making the plan. There's not a real or imagined pledge on the part of the city.
And the park board agreement that we're referring to is the city, that the school would take some of its money.
That's correct.
And give it back to or pay it back over to the city to help the city in funding the building of this park.
Right. That being a range between the board and the city. But yes, we're right now anticipating that the bond will come for the bond issue.
That's correct. That bond that has been being paid was about a 40-year bond that paid off like last year or the year before. One, is that correct, Mr. Tom? Been in place for about 40 years?
No, this bond is the last bond that just recently paid off. It was in effect for about 40 years.
I hadn't seen one that got paid off.
Actually, I thought that the current pledge is up until 2028.
That's correct.
Okay.
2028.
The pledge was, but what I'm saying is the actual bond was paid off prior to the pledge. What pledge did I say?
Right now, the board does have a loan that's outstanding with citizen bond, but that's all that the original issue that you're speaking of has been paid off.
Sure. What I'm getting at is nothing's going to change. It's going to be as like it's been for the last 40 years.
That's correct. There's no difference in the amount that's...
It has been for the last 40 years. It's a little over 40 years from the time it expired, but it's been 40 years around July.
So if this bond is issued and it's a 20-year bond, the school wouldn't be obligated but for 20 years on extension on this agreement?
Or have a loan. They may do 30 or 25. Yes, that's correct. The appropriation, but it's not an increase in the appropriation.
I understand. I think they were concerned about how many years it was going to be obligated.
Yeah, it'll be for whatever term the bond is outstanding.
So if it's 20 years, it's 20 years.
That's correct. Well, we appreciate your assistance. Thank you.
Do you want me to go with that?
Well, the amendatory agreement, and I don't want to complicate things or oversimplify things, but the amendatory agreement is an agreement between the city and the school board. And quite frankly, because of where we are, we don't know exactly, we don't know how much it's going to cost to build a gymnasium. We don't have all the particulars on what the ultimate cost is going to be. We don't have a construction contract in place. So the amendatory agreement is written in such a way that once we actually get to that point where we are ready to sign a construction contract, we'll present that information to the school. The school will have some input because that's part of their funds are being used to do that. And at that point in time, there will be some mechanism for the payment of the grant or the portion that the school's paid to the city. That's all not being agreed to because we don't know exactly how that's going to work because we're not to that point. But we are to the point, or the school is to the point, where they need the pledge so they can move forward with what they want to do. That's very significant. And so we went ahead and structured this deal where they get their pledge, we get the grant agreed to for the assistance in funding the building of the park gymnasium. And it left a few things open-ended on exactly how we agree to do it and when the money's paid, but that's because we don't know exactly when we're going to start construction. Or they don't know exactly the extent, you heard from Bob, they don't know exactly the extent of exactly how much money they would be needing to borrow in the bond issue and how long it would be. They don't know a lot of those things yet, but they do need this pledge so they can go forward.
Basically, we need to pass 100% resolutions.
They need to go ahead and...
We need to make that right.
That ordinance.
I'm making motion to approve.
Well, we need to, we need to motion in the second to spend the rules, to give immediate consideration to this ordinance.
I need to ask for a motion to do, as Todd said, spend the rules for this, consideration to this ordinance. Motion. I didn't say all in favor. You got to act on it. Any other way?
And then we need to make a motion in second on adopting the actual ordinance and it's ordinance number...
983.
983.
I need to ask for a motion to accept that, pass that ordinance, number 983. Ten minute motion. Keith, second all in favor. That's got all we needed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Bob, Mr. Tom.
Thank you.
We move forward with this project and make more people be here.
Thank you on behalf of the park board. Thank you on behalf of the city. Hey, some happy folks sitting back there behind you in the back row.
Good night for the park board.
Mayor, we've had hooky ways and we'd be excused now.
Y'all ready to go?
Give you a going way, brother.
Appreciate you, y'all.
Thank you very much.
How about the May Graham question?
I almost got a swing.
Tell me that you're signing.
I'm calling.
I'm ready for Caitlin.
That agreement is...
The Jameson's...
Yeah.
I thought of the...
You're a son of a...
I'm your mother.
I'm your son.
I'm your mother.
I'm your mother.
I'm your son.
I'm your kid.
I'm your son.
You're a son of a...
Maybe.
I'm your mother.
I'm your son.
I'm with you too.
I just wrote it today.
Look, I'm buying it.
Here, do I say?
I sat down with James. Angie had me on the pair on that. I thought we had a copy of that on that second agreement, ALDOT. The next item on the agenda is 23/24 budget discussion. I asked for that to be put on there because there's a couple of things I want to make sure that the council, and make sure we're all on the same page about this budget. Mike prepares budget. He goes a lot, I don't know if he still does, but he did go to each department and ask them like what their wishes were, things that they might need or whatever to make, you know, put in the budget to, or if it was going to be an expense that we had when the budget wasn't ready. So somewhat not surprised, not prepared for what the expense might occur during the year. There's a few things that he's got in there that I wanted to make sure. But when it comes to whether it's in the budget or not, just because it's in the budget, I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel in the right place to, just because it's in the budget, to give the okay without taking it before the council. One particular item in here is on the longevity. I think longevity pay, I believe that we had passed a resolution, resolution number 1226 back 20th day of November of 2018 to continue the longevity as it stated in this resolution for nine years served, X, nine dollars, blah, blah, blah. I'm okay with doing it when it's in a resolution where the council has voted and that's what we have agreed on. But this particular year, Mike's got in the budget for a one-time doubling what that longevity pay is. I didn't feel comfortable doing that without going before the council just because it's in the budget. I didn't feel comfortable because of resolution or any resolution we got in place does not reflect it being doubled at one time. So that's why I've asked for that to be put on the agenda is because it was questioned to me about, because we usually make that longevity payment in November, first week or so in November to where it can be used during the holidays by the employees to, you know, first Christmas or whatever. So that being said, I want to know how the council stands on the way it's written in the budget and the way it's written on this resolution, how we need to handle it at this particular time.
Let's please, we got in our package. It says not budgeted.
It says not budgeted. It says items for consideration. So I think if, I talked to Mike, asked him, he said there was a suggestion. He didn't really need to put it in there as a line out. It was a myth, is what I was told. I don't know. I think it was just a suggestion for the council to look at.
Well, I think with this interpretation came in that was in debate. It's not in the budget.
So that being said, longevity, I need to, I don't really know. I have to ask for a motion second to pay the longevity as it's written in this resolution.
It's already been paid.
That's the way I want to go forward with it this year is pay the longevity written in the resolution. Do you have a question? That budget suggested go with the resolution?
I agree.
Was there something else on that that I would work into? The other part down there where it says increased library transfer from the general fund. I believe this is a line out. You got it? Have you got a copy?
Yeah, it was in there.
The new budget would increase library transfer from city general fund by $5,000 per year, which replaced a $5,000 decrease in state funding that we'll not be getting this coming year. This would add $416.66 per month to their charity bid in the first of the month. Does the council have a problem increasing that? I need to ask for a motion second to increase that.
Because that was because Regina, I think, got notification that one of the grants that she gets every year is a $10,000 grant. From this point on, she was only going to get five, and she uses that for a couple of her programs.
Motion from James. Second, Gene, all in favor. Would increase the... The next item on that discussion is senior citizen transfer from the general fund. The new budget would increase the senior citizen portion of $1,500 to $4,000 per year to help cover the cost of senior program the park has been paying out of park funds. It would add $333.33 per month of checks written the first of the month. Mike has stated in here it could not be added to the park check if he would ask to be written a separate check each month so senior portion has funds available each month for, each month and not along part of the code of any shortages.
So this is not something new. This is something they already get. It just would not be coming out of park fund. Just got to...
Correct. It'd be coming out of general fund instead of park. Mike has stated in here it could not be added to the park check that he would ask to be written a separate check each month so senior program has funds available each month for, each month and not along the park to code any shortages.
So this is not something new, this is something they already get, it just would not be coming out of the park fund, just gotta.
Correct. It'd be coming out of the general fund instead of the park. Any questions or comments on, on that discussion?
The fifteen hundred's coming out of the general fund.
It's gonna be.
What he's saying is anything over that that he's been out of the park thing?
But what is the part, where's his budget coming in?
Does it say twenty?
Fifteen to four thousand.
That's what he wants to increase it to.
Well, I'm starting to increase it from fifteen hundred to four thousand.
That's what was in the budget.
That's what, that's what I need, that's what I'm asking for, for them to increase it from fifteen hundred to four thousand out of the general fund to cover, keep the park kind of paying out.
The, the program has grown since they were getting the, the initial fifteen hundred. It just takes a lot more to, to do things with them.
Do you have any idea how much the parks already been out, paying out on top of what the city's paying?
I could give those figures for you, but I don't have them handy.
Come on.
I don't have them handy, but I can get those figures.
Well, I'll carry it.
Maggie, I asked what happens to our senior degree grants that we get this year to buy supplies and senior citizens as well?
Everybody got a copy of this? Did everybody go over that reasoning on this, this other part of this senior program? Checking account? Yeah? He's asking, he's, it's a recommendation from Mike, City Manager Mayor, to increase funding for this program from fifteen hundred to four thousand dollars per year. And he's also making a recommendation for the council to consider standing a separate checking account for those funds to go into for the senior program to, instead of it going in the general fund, park general fund and expenses and everything flowing through that general fund checking account. That, that money be set aside for senior program, correct?
Not just for nine years, okay, we might have to save for here.
Yeah, that, that's, is that correct, what I just said? The reason the account was closed because it was not as active as it is now. There's not as much going, there weren't as much going through there as there are now. And he's trying to simplify, make it easier to separate the expenses of the park versus the senior citizen program. Checks and balances is what we're. Who, who, who would be over the, the, does Mike do an internal, internal audit of the park records, the park expenditure from the general funds? He'd be able to that same checking account?
Yes, sir. And then Greg, you will get it as well?
You should do it over again.
No, I'm pretty looked at.
Oh, I thought that's what she's looking at.
No, I'm looking.
No, I, I don't really, I think it, I mean, it simplifies the records and makes it easier to, know what, I'd say what's what, what, what the park's spending and taking in versus what the senior citizens taking in and what they're spending toward that. I mean, anything to simplify. I personally don't see a problem based on my recommendations. I believe Bill Kay opened a checking account back up. Set a new account when it was closed before because it was inactive, kind of wasn't much activity in it.
What's going in, what, what are all those in there?
The money's on, do they get donations to that fund from any different fund?
We've got that, I have my money where we sell the ceramics. I know I have a Rad- uh, thing that anytime anybody wants to buy Rad- uh, they can do that online and the checks we get from that, uh, any monthly donations we get.
And what in terms of going into there to just the general fund?
Right now it's a general fund, that's what they're gonna do, separate it. So this is not a different, something different, no, that is fine.
It is going into the parks, and they have to leave it.
Anytime I am short on food, which is, it's pretty, we just take it back over, has not been an issue. But if I have food, not temp, or I'm short on stuff, I have to run somewhere in town and get stuff. It has to come out of there so I can get reimbursed. So there's several things coming in and out that I have. All of my fundraiser things, we do swamp drawings. Anything like that.
You use those monies on, like, if you take the seniors on a trip, you use those monies, that same monies?
Mm-hmm. And like any, we've started having a lunch with Pop-Loa, and I go by, I always go to Nate and let him do the size. I take that money for that, out of it, things like that. My bingo candy, my bingo prizes, snacks that we use for bingo prizes. My ceramics program, the supplies and things free, it's come out of it.
Have you made a two?
I would be.
Eight, eight of the three?
Who would be over the checks?
How many signatures would be required on that check?
It would be two signatures, so I'd like Susan, Sandy in the office, Reggie and myself, and any of you that would like to be on there.
Which is the same as the park account.
I recommend to the council that we raise that to fifteen hundred to four thousand and put it in, do a sep- uh, separate checking account for the senior programs that will, where they can better track what's going in and out of it. Ask a motion to, Gina made a motion second, Larry second, Alvin's favorite. Next item on the agenda is open this. Go ahead, Keith, if you can.
Get something, I know the coverage thing's based down there about B and B on Highland. Is anything else supposed to be done down there?
I think it'll root and see, he hasn't signed off on it yet, we gotta pick my money on that. And I need to see what else, is anything else that's going to take place?
I don't know if it's.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's. One reason, I feel like it's not complete because the landowner that joins, it's not on their, for us.
Still the space.
Yeah. That's where we're at, we've, we've got a problem with joining landowner not doing what their, and his Chinese hands sense that the project's stolen.
Sitting barrier case down here that tends to get started on this.
Or did they? It's probably once today midway.
That's good. Be something, maybe a couple months, but at least it'll get done. So that'd be something for a month for a couple months, but at least it'll get done?
Yeah, go along with it.
I guess that's it.
Um, I actually have two things, but I was gonna get Regina, if she, you know, on, she's gonna kinda give us an update on the, what she. I'm passing it to Ryan.
Yeah, the, we were, we finally got what we need or talking about, our new flooring. That was something that was approved about a year ago, and we just carried it over in the budget. But the, when we talked about it a year or so ago, I, if, I don't know if you remember, I, I brought you the research where I found out that it could actually also be considered to use it with the COVID funding because of the carpet not being sanitized and not being able to be sanitized. So we, I called three and only one showed up, so we do have the estimate and quote for that. But within getting that done, we also realized that our ceiling, mostly in just the, the main part of the library, the tiles are crumbling and they're falling out. I'm having to tape them. When we had the issue with the squirrels, they were knocking them out. But Randy got that fixed, and we haven't heard any squirrels in about a week or so in, since Mr. Gilliam come out and fixed the outside of the room where they were coming in. I called and got, tried to get three quotes for the ceiling to be repaired, and two showed up, and, but only one submitted the bid. And they, the issue with bringing the ceiling up now is because David said, and Mike, when I talked to him about the issues, they said that we would really need to get the ceiling fixed before we put the tile, the new floor in, the tile floor. But we've, like, I, I use, you know, like, white duct tape if I have it to keep the tiles that, but the part in the front of the library, it's just a wee, like, there is no grid. It's this type of tile, but there's no grid. I guess it's either tongue and groove or it holds up somewhere else in there. And so if they get, if they're broken or, you know, and I'm sure it's just from the years, uh, that ceiling's been there since nineteen sixties when the building was built.
That's not suspended, it's not, it doesn't have a grid.
Yeah, I guess, well, I know it's a flat.
Twelve by twelve inch square stuff, you just take it up there and rock the next piece in, and that's.
And I think Mr. Gilliam come in and looked at it and was gonna consider maybe buying, like, pieces to repair the ones that were damaged, but there's no way you're gonna get, he can't, he said he can't get tile to match or anything because it's so old. The only thing that had me concerned on Mr. David's quote, or David Isom's quote, is they said that the light fixtures installed will have to be installed by the owner. So I'm, I guess how the ceiling is, that they're gonna have to remove the light fixtures to put the new ceiling up, but he won't put them back.
If you put suspended ceiling in, if you drop the line down from where the lights are, the light fixtures, and have LED lighting, it'd be better off in years to come?
Well, that was the other thing that's come up. Last week, the park guys was there helping me with the light bulbs, and we, I had to go to LNS twice to get new ballast, and they said several of the lighting fixtures had burnt wires. And so I was just trying to figure out a way, you know. So I did reach out to James Wood, who is the last electrician that the city had used, who put in our new, uh, the new plugs to help with the computer system. He's overworked right now, he said, but he was gonna send someone who had assisted him with some Winfield jobs. But Mike also suggested to contact someone else, but that was just yesterday, and I haven't gotten his number. I didn't know if maybe we just wanted somebody to come and look, but the park guy said, you know, the ballast shouldn't be going out as often as they should, and they were, they had several burnt wires in the light fixtures. And of course, those lights have been there since the building was built also.
Who, I've been not listening. Who, who have you got to look at the light?
Um, I called James Woods with CPM that the city has used before, but he's not gonna be able to get out. And he was gonna send a guy that assisted him when he was doing all the work at the library and up here. But he didn't give me his name in the message that he's got that with me. And then Mike mentioned, um, Keith, to contact him to see if he was available. And then I was just gonna ask, I was gonna text you to ask if there was anyone else that we might should get.
I'm gonna work this.
And I gonna like it?
You've got a light in there with a few new ballasts in it? Every one of those lights, like, taken out of the building, frozen and done, and LEDs put back in place?
But did, did we not do, I thought we did lighting and burn up too.
Oh, no, it was just the, we went from the T four to the T eight. That was in that one grant that we got years ago, and they swapped out the ballast for T four to T eight. I mean, I'll be honest with you too, with the LED, I, when I researched about the LED lighting, I think we could even lessen how many light fixtures are in the building because there's like a ton of lights in that front. because there's like a ton of lights in that front.
I think we need to, as big as this project sound like it's gonna be, I don't, I think that we need to hold up, like I said, we don't think we need to do nothing yet for the floor just yet till we fix this problem that's up top. I think that we need to get certified electrician in there, and then let's look at maybe getting funds to change out all the lighting and go forward from that to that, if we have to, I mean, I can get the city engineer, I can get them involved in it and let them know what we're looking at, maybe today, and probably be back here tomorrow.
Okay.
But I think that's what we need to do, is know what that stuff is and know what that building is, and have it inspected before we.
Yeah, we've got some lights that, you know, they'll come on, or they won't come on as soon as we, you know, turn them on, and then all of a sudden, it's like they, you know, it will come on.
They. They need to be gone.
And every now and then, sometimes it's like we, we get a little nervous because it's.
Five-year period of time, they pay for the second. A little bit concerned, a little bit concerned.
That's what I was thinking.
Formed a home up there. You got me a little bit concerned by the light kind of. So why didn't you get up there and check the park? Well, that's what we're fisting at, that's what we're doing. Quick, can we kill them if you can get up there?
I did, I have reached out. I did reach out to the Alabama Public Library Service, because in years past, I have come across some, like, construction grants, and I talked with the state director, and she's gonna look in to see if it, if, if what we need might qualify for that. The only issue with it is the cycle has already gone through, and so it wouldn't be until 2025.
There actually may be a grant to put LEDs in public building like that.
Yeah.
Gina, I think y'all still have that problem, that the city bought and paid for the grants.
There's a problem with Alabama Power.
Yeah, and we're not actually a 501(c)(3).
But you're a city and you're still aware of getting grants.
Okay. When I tried with Alabama Power that one year, I was told because we weren't 501(c)(3), they wouldn't, but I was confused, I had thought so too, I thought, why can't we, we're into the city. Yeah. I'll look into more of some of that also. We are working on building that the friends of the library and getting a 501(c)(3) that helps with other things like that, but that's gonna take just a little bit more time. Did you get my paperwork?
They're waiting on, I don't know, they're waiting on their attorney. If they could get him off his keister, if he didn't do something, maybe they'd have one.
No, uh-uh, no, that's not it at all.
I'll talk to him tomorrow, see if I can get him sped up.
He just dropped those, like, paperwork off.
Okay, so our first step in, so I can tell, okay, are we okay to, like, to, can we, like, go ahead and go with this quote from Country Carpets?
I don't wanna do that yet, because I don't see how long this is gonna take.
Okay.
They don't want to give you a quote.
Yes. I called four people, and he was the only one that even showed up.
I, I, trust me, I don't know.
Okay.
Let's just hang on to that quote for right now, maybe I can just talk.
And I told him that, I told, you know, and he's well aware, he actually is one, David actually sent a gentleman over to look at the ceiling, and he's the one that said it just really, he didn't really do that type of ceiling work and felt it was just a little too much for him. So David is aware that that's kind of gonna be a holdup to get this, you know, finished.
Did he give you a, like, how long that quote's good for?
This bid you got right here is for a new grid system.
Like thirty days, sixty days?
Yes.
That's what you want after?
Yes.
Tell us right now, if you can.
Do you have another suggestion, or you think that would be better?
No, that's not a bad problem.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this was, I told him I would, you know, like to have it, you know, for the grid, because it would be easier to, you know, the tiles would, you know, stay better because of the way it is. No, David doesn't have one, so, I mean, it's, it's possible that that could, you know, go up, you know, by the.
Well, that's what I was saying, like, because we don't know if it's gonna take, if it takes sixty to ninety days, and I'm sure it's gonna take longer than that.
And I'll let him know as soon as, you know, I'll, I'll text you and let you know, you know, that, that it could be just a little bit longer, but I wanted to update you on that, to be sure.
I think my board's working, I think they're sixty days.
Okay, good, yeah, okay.
Let me, let me work on that when Bryant back up, like, what happened?
Well, I appreciate y'all so much, thank you, thank you very much.
Um, the NYA building, the, the grant that we're working with right now ends in November, so it's gotta be moved upon. Two people have put in quotes for the windows, one person putting quotes for residential and custom, the second one only put in for custom, so I have asked that person to put in for residential also, so the load will be, and I was hoping to get that today, but I didn't, so I'm hoping to get that tomorrow, so that we can have that to act on that, to get that started, because we really need to, we'll have that ready for the end of the month.
And also on that building, I thought they were starting today, and they thought, I don't know if you seen it, but they must be doing all the woodwork around. If they didn't start that, like they do tomorrow, I thought they started today.
Oh, and I was just gonna say, which I, I sent everybody this message too, because I've had so many people reach out to me, very happy with their road paving, and the company that did the road paving this time, so.
They're still, they're still.
And they're still, they're still working, but everyone has really bragged on how, how well they're doing.
Extra city look back. Yeah, that's why I was also, but Jane. We'll skip there. Say the best of life.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not gonna bring anything up?
On the paving.
Although they are supposed to pave the track, obviously not.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't know, that's what we had discussed a little bit ago, I've gotta give a look, I don't know why that, how that got overlooked, but they're, they're coming back, they'll actually be back up here for this project on midway, with a couple, whatever they're doing, they've gotta come back, they're, they're the ones doing that paving. But we're, right now, where we at, we come in just a little bit shy of seven hundred thousand, we're around six hundred and eighty thousand is what we've spent. I was talking with these over here on this side earlier, but I also thought that we might need to go back and look in, but I thought Bryant Street was supposed to have been in there.
It is supposed to be in there.
And that, that street's been, has not been done, Bryant Street and the track at the park, those two items. I reached out to Luke, the engineer, and I said, did them pack up and live? He said, yes, but they're coming back. So I don't know if they had to pull out and go somewhere else, and then, because they knew they were coming back for this street and then planning on doing those, but I'm not so much sure that everybody was on the same page, that those two items, they are supposed to be done, Bryant Street and the track, I'm not sure that we all agree to that. Not likely for the council, because we'll probably have another council meeting prior to them being back to do that, and not to see if the council is being, you know, in favor of maybe trying to add another street or two while they're here, I mean, because we've got the money, and I'd like to see if we couldn't maybe spend at least another two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand and pay them while they're here at the price that it's at.
And whether this would be that, do we have time to decide before next?
That's what, I think so, I think we've got time before next, I mean, you can go through, and kinda, Luke can give us the cost estimate again like he did, but I think we've come in shy this time of what it's gonna be. I feel like the, the work that they're doing, and as efficient as they are in the price that we got, they will own it, I did get, confirm that with Luke today, that they would own it at that same price if we added streets to it. So that's kinda like the council's thing, you know, I think, I think we need to go ahead where we're, where we're at and spend up to make another two hundred fifty thousand while they're here.
I think we can add streets probably in a few minutes.
And on the stop signs, I think, I don't know if anybody's in here, just tell me, but I believe the stop signs are in, and I've talked with Rob about replacing the stop signs over here.
They're on the bills.
Yeah, they finally come in, they, we didn't get them, and we were supposed to got them, but they're finally in, so we'll be getting them stop signs put up here in the next week or so.
Mike, I'm sorry, um, one thing that, talking about the roads and area, I've been forgetting to mention, since the end of Ashwood Drive, we, the library sign is gone, it went from the last tornado, and I didn't know who could replace that, or who we could replace that. It was the sign at the, like, the, on bank, you know, on bankhead to show you turn here to go to the library.
With animal service?
Yes, mhm.
Yeah, I remember that.
We always had a sign there, and people kinda tend to look at it.
You'll take care of it.
Okay, and was they gonna strip the parking lot? Like a blue, yeah.
What color was that sign?
It's a, it's a standard, they're standard library signs, they're blue, it's like they're all the same everywhere, it's just a standard library sign that's blue, and your person's open like a book, and it says library with an arrow, yeah, it's blue and white is usually the colors.
Find this plus door.
I think I have.
You got a plug for me?
I think I heard one. Thank you.
And look, Tim brought something else to my attention, that he was asking me about striping.
Yes.
Thermal plastic is what I was wanting to put out to work with last long, but they're a good ways out, I mean, they're, they're, they're probably a month to out, being able to come do it. I don't know if Chamber, if he's met, if he's discussing with Chamber, if they want how the, the business owners is wanting to do theirs, if they're gonna use just regular paint, or if they wanna wait till that comes, you know, it's gonna be a good bit more expensive, probably about twice the price of what paint is, but, but it'll last twice as long.
Hopefully thirty to sixty days, we have some rain too.
Right, I'll ask the business owners tomorrow.
Mike mentioned that they might be stripping the parking lot at the library, is that? I've been, he said something about, because we have no stripes right now, basically, in our parking lot.
At least to mention it to us, is it, is it basically?
Well, I thought, I, I assumed he did, I'm sorry, he thought that it would be included in this last.
We need to know where we're gonna be doing that, and they even pitched at the police department, I'd ask them to do the city hall parking lot out here, because all those stripes are gone. I stripped those personally, probably six year ago, six, six, seven year ago, it's gone, it's all done gone.
I stripped them, they're, they're.
It's lost, they're there.
Yeah.
We need to get this together, we're not very good places.
Think I got some old rooms?
Yeah, I think we got a couple of rooms.
Are you sure that's James? Sheriff, bring it back to us. I don't guess I've got anything else, anybody else got any other things I need to ask for motion, play the bill.
Let me ask a question, how long have been since the parking lot up here front of the paint, I mean, paint posted in there?
Yeah, we already talked about.
What is going to strip in it anyway?
Before we get to the striping part, I'm going somewhere else.
City Hall.
That's concrete.
Yeah, we're gonna strip it though.
Yeah.
Why don't we put a seal on it, then paint, strip it?
If you, if you got a company, we can put it out there and do it, and I'm fine with it.
I want to find somebody to put a seal on there.
You know, it's not asphalt.
I know it's not.
You're gonna seal that concrete and strip it. You gonna paint it black?
I mean, you can put a seal on that asphalt right there.
I mean, on the concrete?
It's just, that is concrete.
Yeah, it's concrete.
Just clean it first.
That's what I was.
Clean it, then strip it.
Yeah. If anybody got any question about the bills, and all that, need to ask for motion, play it. Tim, make motion, keep the second on paper. Next time, we'll generally ask for most of the buildings.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero turn mowers, we have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can, thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years, we'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioners. We've been family owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.